Good evening. It's July 12th and I'm calling the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. The first item on our agenda is assigning a new street name for Woodard Park. And Kara is going to address that.
Hello, thank you. So we're just looking for the Select Board to assign the accessway to Woodward Park as Woodward Park Road so that we're able to address the fields within the park appropriately for easiest easier access for emergency services.
Okay. So I'll ask our chiefs, do you have any comment on this? Jay, Emily, any, any thoughts?
I think it's hugely beneficial, although there aren't significant number of structures during active times or multiple events down there in an effort to better direct emergency services, whether it be police, fire and EMS to have each field or location addressed, even distance wise is hugely beneficial. So we're certainly advocates of having that roadway named and also the, the various locations addressed accordingly.
So they don't need signage or anything, you feel they can do that by measuring the distance between each field?
So there will be a number assigned, for instance, the tennis courts would be an even number, I'm just guessing, let's say it's going to be fifty six and then the soccer fields may be eighty eight. And so obviously in New London, all you do is add the zero and that's how many feet down the road. So we might be able to more quickly assess, heaven forbid, there's a cardiac arrest, being able to find out even numbers on the right or odd numbers on the left.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Emily, do you have anything?
I would agree, and I think it's helpful to have it Woodward Park Road as well, because that's what many people know it as is Woodward Park. So just kind of keep it all very simple so that people can find it, not only for emergency services, but out of town teams that might be coming down to those fields.
True.
So they could plug Woodward Park Road right into their GPS to be able to find it easily.
BB, do you have any comments?
No.
Bill?
No.
Do I have a motion to name Woodard Park Road?
I move we name Woodward Park, the Woodward Park entrance Woodward Park Road.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it passed, thank you. Next, we have Putnam Kidder. Whoops, sorry, what did I miss? Oh, street numbering and addressing ordinance, okay. Yeah. So Carolyn, may I ask you to address land use and assessing with regard to a draft ordinance? I'm not sure what this is, so I'll have to fill us in.
So we do have a street number and an addressing ordinance that was adopted in two thousand and three, but we haven't updated it since that point or revisited it. Believe the original is four pages long and was missing some key points that had been brought to my attention by Chief Cobb that we just don't address in our ordinance that would be helpful for emergency services. So there's a proposed ordinance that's much more streamlined, should be easier for the residents to understand and then also adds in those any pieces that were missing. And then it does also add an enforcement piece just to, the goal is not to be punitive, but just to make sure that we have a way to encourage people that to actually follow the ordinance for the safety purposes. So that was also added, we did not have that before, but we're just asking for that for an update to again, for simplicity and to revisit something that hasn't been revisited in twenty years.
Okay. Bill, BB, do you have any comments on this?
Just that I reviewed it and I am currently out of compliance at my own house. Yeah, yes, it is, and I, you know, which led me to ask him if there was an ordinance in place, I haven't seen the original one. I guess my only question to the two on my left here, because you have a lot more experience with this than I do, is your position on the punitive part of it. But other than that, I think it absolutely make makes perfect sense and especially for the purpose of the emergency management people to find the house when they need to find it, so. Oh, that's, this is the original? Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, I do, I do. Those are my only comments, okay?
So I, I think the punitive thing is simply to give us a tool in case we, we need it, otherwise it's sort of a toothless ordinance, you know, we don't, I haven't seen either the chiefs use enforcement very often in terms of money, but it does give them another tool in their, in their toolbox, so. Kara, does this also address, I read, I told earlier, but the, the issue that we got in a letter recently about unit numbers at Fenwood?
So this ordinance deals primarily with the resident responsibility of where to, where to
Put the numbers.
Put the numbers and how to put the numbers and those things, sort of things on live property. We did have in the original ordinance, we did address sort of how, how we address things in town and at Kim's suggestion, that was broken out into a separate document that's more of a, a policy guideline so that, because that's really something that's our responsibility at the town on how we want to move forward with those things. So we do have that separately broken out, but we decided to focus on the actual ordinance tonight, which would be what needed to go before the public hearing in terms of then how numbers are addressed on the house.
Yeah, no, I understood that, that part.
Yeah.
I went and checked my numbers also, BB.
And that's the goal, you understood it, so that's much simpler than it used to be.
At least the fire department has been to my house for kitchen smoke enough time, so I think they know where it is now. But, but what about this, is this really a safety issue also, the Fenwood issue?
Yep, so in the policy update, which I
I think Fenwood is just one example of that, because I notice the shopping center now has unit numbers on each of its separate buildings.
So I did work on the shopping plaza update, so that was done starting last summer at Jay and Mike Mathie's recommendation, and that took several months to work through that process. So the Fenwood concern, as it stands with the current ordinance, the way that it was written in two thousand and three, it is consistent with what we required in two thousand and three. So in the policy update that we're looking to, it softens that a little bit, so there's a little more flexibility for updating things as we see these issues come up. And that particular resident, I've let him know that it's something that we can look at updating it, but it would be my recommendation, I'm assured BJ and Emily's, and I see Jay raising his hand, if we do it, it needs to be all or nothing. So it's going to take a little bit of time to gather more support, because as a condo unit, the state law is clear, we can't change those numbers without either permission from every single condo owner, written permission, or going through another public hearing and then it, we, I don't need to say that anymore.
Thank you for the answer, yeah.
With, I'm going to work with that particular property owner and he's going to work to gather more support within his condominium and speak with the board of directors and we're going to work on that and over the next few months, but hopefully to gather a little more support before we jump in on that.
Okay, good, thank you, I, I just coincidence of that letter coming to us about the same time, I see Jay shaky as it.
Yeah, and the, the other thing too is, and we've had multiple calls at Fenwood, so when that, when, when your dispatchers send out the emergency services, they do say ninety nine Fenwood Commons Unit and not to single anyone out, four oh seven, there is not a four hundred number, but so, so they do give the unit numbers to us. As far as I know, there's never been an issue with finding or delay of services to any one of the units. The ninety nine just means it's a thousand feet down the, down the road on the, on the left hand side.
This would be the same as Lionbrook, correct?
That is correct, yes. Yeah.
Okay. Chief Cobb, anything?
Nope.
Okay, are there any comments from the public about this? Any questions? Peter?
Change any of the existing numbering that's in town? Because I know in two thousand and three, our number changed, not a big deal, but we changed it, does it change any, any numbers? And secondly, who in town, town government determines what a number will be for when a house is built and there's a new property?
So I'm actually the one that's currently responsible for assigning the new numbers. Kim is the, the backup for that of the E nine one one liaison is the term, I believe I'm the primary and Kim is, is great at that as well, so that's currently me. In terms of changing anything currently, this update isn't, the goal is not to change any addresses now, just to update the ordinance so that it's, it's again, it's, it's refreshed and it's a little, a little easier for people to follow. And then if there are concerns, those are brought to me by usually Jay or Emily and then they're addressed at that time.
It's mostly about how to display your house number, where it should be, how close to the road, the, and all that sort of stuff. Yeah.
Okay, and in answer to your question, BB, about the penalty, I think unless there is a penalty, I don't think people will make the effort, basically, and this isn't, you know, we're not throwing them in jail, so.
No.
I think that's Yeah, yeah. Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the street numbering and addressing ordinance as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now the next item on our agenda is, we'll hear from Putnam Kidder, our Recreation Director, and Jackie, who is a member of the Recreation Commission.
Yeah, so I am Putnam Kidder, I'm the current Recreation Director and I'm joined tonight by Jackie Christensen, who is our Chair for our Recreation Commission. I can't talk on that. Um, so yeah, we're really glad to be here to have the opportunity to talk to you about where the Rec Department is and where we want to go. No problem.
Just keep on going and find good team love.
So we want to just kind of give you a brief overview of where we are and where we'd like to go, some kind of goals moving forward, some of the programs we've done and some of the kind of focus areas we want to have moving forward. So there are three parts of our mission statement, I can just read them. One is to provide safe and well-maintained recreational spaces, which encourage healthy lifestyles and appreciation for our beautiful natural surroundings. We want to have our recreational spaces be safe and accessible to, and to accessible to community and the residents and also for people to know all the resources we do have, because there are a lot, I feel, that people might not know about. There we are. So that was the first one I just talked about, the second is to promote community connection through cross-generational and inclusive recreation and leisure experiences. So cross-generational, meaning trying to really tap into every age group present in our residents and our overall community and not just focus on maybe kids and families as it is often easy to do in recreation. So we want to really be focused on having a broad programming base to try to meet the needs of everyone in the community and the residents. And inclusive, trying to make it as open and as accessible as possible and also thinking about the unique situation we have here. Speaking of the outing club, that we do have the unique situation and I think it's a really good positive partnership of the outing club has the facilities to handle the youth sports and the Rec Department focuses on the non-sports related kind of activities, more leisure kind of educational health and wellness, holiday event kind of activities. So a lot of places you go to, they would always have, the Rec Department would handle all of these sports, so we have a unique, but I think, good partnership here with the outing club, so I don't really have to go into the youth sports athletics too much. But
I was just going to add, um, you know, that was a new mission statement that we adopted that last year, you know, and we intentionally, you know, kind of rewrote it a bit to draw that bold line between what New London Rec is about and what the outing club is about and to emphasize, you know, cross-generational, that's a big headline and, you know, partnerships and positive partnerships, you know, that it's, it's not a competition, you know, that all of these wonderful organizations are in our, our town and our community. And so we wanted, you know, to really highlight that we're, we're coming in with the spirit of like, let's get together, combine our resources and talents, you know, to provide really enriching opportunities for, for the town.
Yeah, I think that, that was really important because we hear so often, you know, why do we have an outing club? Why do we have a recreation department? So that's good to illustrate what the differences are, so thank you, that's great.
And I think also that's the last part of the mission statement is to offer quality programs and activities in a cooperative spirit with community partners. So we're really trying to offer the best, safest, most efficiently run programs and events we can have and also working in cooperation with the many community partners, we'll show some of those later on, but in a cooperative spirit to say we're all trying to have a robust recreational offering in the area for the towns, residents and also the community, so to work with them to really offer a lot of opportunities. So yeah, we just had some nice pictures of winter activities, Santa coming by, firetruck on the green, our winter carnival, big band concert at Whipple, the ice rink, which is really, really popular, winter carnival fireworks, winter carnival happens in February and our lovely tree on the green. Ball activities, we started fight football for kids on the green, Halloween was really big and we're in the process of trying to get that back bigger and better and more tightly organized and efficient as that continues to be a popular event. The pumpkin people is going to be all ours this coming fall, so that's exciting, the Lake Sunapee Chamber of Commerce is taking over for that as we were in our transitional period, so that's going to be really exciting. And the bottom right one is a, a walk to school, bike and walk to school activity, which we were excited to reinvigorate because that was an annual day they had in honor of Chad Denning, who was the prior, prior Rec Director, and they had a bike to walk, bike and walk to school day, so we were excited to get that back to encourage healthy choices for kids in the fall, so we're going to do that. And then our Rec Van with a spider on it on Main Street for Halloween. Moving into summertime things, our lovely beaches, which we're really excited about, the folks on the left are our beach staff, that was for our hospital days event, free hot dog day down at Elkins, which was quite popular, we'll be bringing that back. And the middle is when we were collaborating with the Rotary on their family fun day last July. So the current state, the next one is myself now full time as of July, on July, January first, twenty twenty-three and moved up from part-time by the, you know, good graces and the good decisions of the, I think, the residents of the town and then the support of the Selectmen and the Rec Commission. And we have the Rec Commission, which is a seven-member volunteer group, which helps to support the Rec Department programming and mission. We work with a gentleman named Len Angeli and he is our kind of water safety lifeguard instructor expert, he has training, quite a long resume in doing those expertise that I do not currently have, I'm learning an awful lot about them, but he has all the letters after his name to make it so he can train our, our lifeguards and also train and oversee our water safety instructors, that's the swim instructors and help us do ongoing in-service training to keep our lifeguards as experienced and kind of active in their training as possible. So that's a really key part to be able to make our, to help get some support and for our folks to get good training too, so that's really helpful. So we have our budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four and then the revolving fund is a fund that was set up for where we take in money for, where we're collecting money for, say, swim lessons, so those are things that don't have to come out of our budget so we can support those programs to do through that fund. That's something that many, that's been around for Rec Departments for a really long time, so that is hopefully ever be growing. We have a little pie chart talking about where the money goes in our budget, you'll see that the majority is through the director salary and then the beach staff wages, which we want to try to keep competitive to try to get good quality folks there to staff our beaches and keep them safe. So our recreational facilities, we have our two beaches, Elkins on Pleasant Lake and Buckland on Little Lake Sunapee. We have the area of the town green and we have Whipple Hall, which is getting a facelift, which hopefully should be done maybe later in the, the end of the summer, early September, so it's going to be looking as good as it ever has, so that's really exciting, I have a, a front row seat to it, so that's kind of fun. And we have the Bob Andrews Memorial Ice Skating Rink, which is really, really kind of a core winter activity for folks recreationally in the town, I know a lot of people really enjoy that. And then we have all of the miles of local hiking trails that are so well maintained by the Conservation Committee here in town. Okay? So thinking about what success looks like in twenty twenty-three, want to have the cross-gen generational multi-age opportunities throughout the year, ongoing, not just one, one season having a lot going on and then kind of having some slower, slower parts of the year, we want to have a pretty consistent lineup of programs and events happening as we go throughout the year. We want to have a strong collaboration with our area organizations and continue to build those partnerships and be able to, like I said, build the recreational opportunities in our area. We want to have the beaches be fully staffed and available on a dependable schedule, well-run, highly-trained staff that enjoy their jobs, that take their job seriously, that interact with the public well and take care of our beaches and that we have a really good experience for everyone down there and that's as organized as we possibly can have it and that's a ongoing goal that we have this, this year and moving forward to make the beaches run as efficiently as possible. Last one would be the website, social media promotional materials to stay regularly updated and reflect our good work in fostering community connections, so really making sure we're getting word out about our events, what we're doing, who we're partnering with and do that as consistently as possible. And that does seem like it is a learning curve to find out what, what works, whether it's just the shopper, whether it's Facebook, social media, things like that. So continuing to work at finding the best way to reach as many people as possible, but we're, I think about seven hundred and eighty between our Facebook and Instagram page, so that's a big jump since last summer, I think we had about five hundred, so we want to continue to grow those numbers and get the word out more and more about what we're doing and what our goals are.
And I would just put a highlight on, you know, kind of that top part there, right? And I think it's, this is the ongoing challenge and Janet, you spoke to it, right? What's, what's the outing club do? What does New London Rec do? You know, so I think the more and more value that we bring to the community, the more that we enhance our communications, you know, the end game is there's, there's clarity around the purpose and the value of New London Rec. So those are kind of our, our tenants that we're, that we're going after.
BB, do you have any questions? Putnam or Jackie? Are you done?
I know, we got a few more.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I'm moving along. Yes. So this is just a list of some of the partnerships we currently have in the community, we hope to continue to grow this list and enhance the partnerships and re, reestablish some of the ones that maybe have, since COVID have kind of gotten not as strong and robust as they were. So a lot of people on there, we hope to continue to grow that list with the people we work with. Focus areas really, again, community outreach, communications, really trying to get a regular schedule seasonally of what we have going on so people can put them in their calendar to know what's happening well in advance, try to really build the social media presence. We would really like to be able to get out some sort of survey tool to be able to find out what people want, to really get a really good pulse of what the residents would like and what we can offer in areas we might not be filling, because it's really good to get input from people to say, okay, maybe you just were involved in our swim lessons this the season, what can we do better next year? What did you enjoy about it? Is there a different timing we could do it? Or feedback is really, really important to get an idea of the best programming we can offer. And then really starting to get back to our post, our pre-COVID offerings, which slowly but surely we are building things up, but everybody is in the same, same boat of really trying to get back, rebuilding slowly and with me being full-time since January, that's really helpful. Volunteer engagement is really, really key. Prior to COVID, I think we had a really robust engagement level with the Rec Department and a lot of people were helping out, so we're really working to rebuild those connections. We had help at our Strawberry Fest from the Cure Sarge Neighborhood Partners, the Rotary Club, we had Selectmen there and we had great people from the Rec Commission, so really trying to build those connections because the Rec Department is one person as of now, so to be able to get as many help, helpers as we can and people who are committed to, whether it's Strawberry Fest, whether it's Halloween, Winter Carnival, other places to get really engaged, motivated volunteers to help us achieve our goals and our mission.
Yeah, and just speaking to that point, I think this is an area where we've kind of made a shift operationally in how we're approaching our various large-scale events where, where we've built committees, right? We, we kind of took a, took, you know, an idea from New London Hospital, you know, sitting on the committee for hospital days and seeing how that was run and how Emily and Jay were brought in months and months before the actual events and how much smoother the events run and you give yourself that much runway, when you have a regular cadence of, of, of meetings, you know, and preparation for that event and it generates more creative ideas, right? And so, you know, one, we did it for the Strawberry Festival, we're doing it right now for Halloween, even though it's, it's only in July, I think we started meeting in April, years past, we might have been like, ooh, it's September, we probably wanted, you know, talk to Emily about closing down the road. So now, giving ourselves some runway so we can have those conversations, those debates, those friendly debates of what, what's reasonable and what's not reasonable. And, you know, some of the things around Halloween that, you know, are exciting that are coming out of it is those, those partnerships, right? We have the Barn Playhouse, Sage at the Barn Playhouse is involved and she's going to help resurrect the haunted trail that used to happen, you know, and, and offer that as an event, you know, a program that people can sign up for, you know, and then they'll, they'll have that event. We have the Historical Society wants to get involved and, and have, you know, folks in costumes dressed as historical figures, maybe standing by their hospital, because that's the, the old hospital, that's definitely haunted, you know, so they can give, you know, some, some color commentary. And so I think it'll be much more, you know, a richer event just because we're, we're putting in that forethought and tapping in a lot more resources early on. So that's been a really nice shift, I think, you know, rather than be like, Putnam, just figure out how to run Halloween.
And I think that, that, because every time we meet, we come up with new ideas and then we might get someone, oh, I know who, someone who knows someone, who knows someone, and then all of a sudden, these kind of interconnected webs of volunteer engagement gets bigger and bigger and bigger and that's what we really need to rebuild. Thinking about that also, internship through Colby Sawyer, I know they've had interns in the past in the Rec Department, that is definitely something we'll be approaching and pursuing this year. So the last part is the operational excellence, thinking about always trying to make the programs and our programming more effective, safer, better run and just thinking about what we have for equipment and supplies. I am engaged in the ongoing professional development through the New Hampshire Parks and Rec Association, which we're a member of, and there's a lot of interaction with other Rec Directors in the state and in the region. And then I have my study guide right now for my Certified Parks and Recreational Professional Certificate, which I started with, and that's through a National Parks and Recreation Association, and that was what we had talked about before, to really help give me some of the background and the, it's a really helpful tool to be able to cover some of those areas of To be able to cover some of those areas of budgeting and communication and human resources. It's a real, I think it's going to be really helpful. And just like we do a small version of that in New Hampshire, they have a national version of that as well of people you can tap into and ask. Oh, I I saw you did this program. How do you do it in Texas or California? So I think that's going to be a really good resource as well. And then also thinking about in our small area to touch base with other. Small surrounding towns and our and our neck of the woods to figure out what they're doing in Sunapee or Newport surrounding towns to. Enhance the recreational opportunities we have in our community and surrounding areas. So I look forward to doing that too. This is a just a seasonal calendar of some of the things we've offered so far since the spring. Lot of different things on there and we hope to continue to offer more and more, more and more diverse programming. Swim lessons started the summer of this week, so we're really excited about that. They had some high water at Elkins, but they they powered through. Um, so that's really great to get that back. Um, so just really trying to make it year-round, a really great. Cross-generational. Kind of offerings of programs and events and continue to be able to grow that and also continuing to meet the needs of what the community wants.
And I think the nice this presentation was obviously a takeaway, you know, it's it's one thing to see the list and then the photos in the beginning, right? And just how much written richness that brings to our community, um, you know, and and having. That community engagement and connection of of people enjoying these different programs and offerings and and I'm. I'm excited to see the survey results, you know, and and what else can we continue to do? Some of this has been rebuilding what, you know, we used to do. Bringing it back post-COVID and now what are the new new things that we can we can offer?
Um, and the last two slides are just some kind of uh promotional things, talking about spring happenings and then our. Um, advertising we had for the strawberry fest. And I think I would just see this presentation as a good starting point to be able to have you understand where we are currently, where we want to go. And then open the door to you having any questions or insight or input um as to. Where you think you would like to see it go and also for us just to be able to come back, whether it's six months. Um, and show where we've where we've gotten to, the goals we're working on and where we want to continue to grow. Because it's really, I'm really excited about it. There are definitely some challenges ahead of us, but I think um it's really headed in the right direction. So. I look forward to working with you to do that, to help the town of really great rec department.
Yeah, and I would just say the other slide previous, you know, I think one thing that we've we've kind of landed on is the challenges of doing like a big. Print. Calendar, you know, magazine annually because things change so quickly. So what we're trying to do more of is like. You know, here's the seasonal upcoming events, putting that in the shop or putting it on social media. So that way it's not just scattershot. You know, one thing at a time, but here are all the offerings happening for that season that people can can put into their calendars and make sure that they come enjoy. So. Um, you know, we're, I think we're trying to do that, like that same format.
Yeah, so just kind of by by season and then people would be looking at. Things that are happening this summer, then they'd be saying, okay, well, we're going to start to see what's coming in the fall. And then in the fall, you start to see what's on tap for the winter. Because it is important to get that the word out there and get engagement and help get volunteers and get support around the events we want to put on.
Um, I'll be really interested to hear um the results of the survey and also uh how things went. At both beaches this summer, because um if there are any issues that they usually revolve revolve around the the beaches, so. Um, you know, maybe this fall, say sometime in October, come back and just let us know about that. BB, do you have some questions?
What? That's a good, that's a good question. With when, when do you plan? When do you plan to send out that survey, do you think?
Uh, it's it's in the process, so that's going to take a little while. So, but it's certainly really important to get it out there and. Find out exactly what the questions are and how best to get the information we want to get. So it's a work in progress.
It might be worth throwing some questions on there about the beaches.
Yeah, I would think the fall, you know, before years end, we'll want to get that survey.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that's one of the areas we're wondering if there's that collaboration with a intern from Colby Sawyer, you know.
Oh, for sure.
You know.
Yeah, yeah. Um, how are the beaches going this summer? I mean, I haven't been to the beach, but the. There haven't been that many days, but are you all staffed up? So it can be, what hours do you have enough staff for to run them?
Yep, so we have currently eleven guards and seven attendants. So we were able to. Go full-time, seven days a week, ten to five P M at both beaches. It's sometimes a um. I can't always control when the kids are going to be there or when they change their.
Yes.
Schedules and things like that. So um, but overall, we have a really good group of individuals who are down there. And it's it's, I think it's a ongoing process to get them. Understanding every part of the job and to be invested in it and they are. Teenagers, so it's it's a growth opportunity for them, but I think we have a really good group of kids and I think it's also them learning about some of them. It is their first job and it is them interacting with the public and how to handle that and um and also kind of. Just to be able to enforce the rules and so. But overall, it's been really, really good and exciting to have some lessons back and we've had a lot of rain.
Yeah.
Um, but I think that continuing to look at the beaches as areas that we can continue to make. More efficient, as safe as possible, as accessible as possible, as enjoyable as possible.
My, um, I'm sorry, I was going to say my son Mason, who's fifteen, is a beach attendant. And he said today was one of the busiest days for taking out paddle boards and kayaks, because I think everybody's like. Might be the only day that doesn't rain all summer, so we better take advantage of it, so.
Is there, is there an older person or a supervisor, something like that at each one of the beaches that can be sort of that liaison? Because you're right, it's tough for a fifteen-year-old kid to, you know, have to deal with a parent or or an adult rather that could be. You know, portraying bad adult behavior, so.
Yeah, so we do have many of the lifeguards are older, upper teens. So they're there, but in the past, I'm kind of the beach person.
Yeah.
Currently, in the past, there was the rec director and then there was a beach director person. Um, so I think that certainly makes things easier to manage the beaches and then for the rec director to be able to offer more programming because. It's pretty all-consuming with scheduling and, you know, trying to take care of lines and take care of docks and things like that. So it's it's a lot to take on. So.
Yeah.
Um, ideally, I think it would be great to be able to think about reinstating that option to make the beaches. As efficient as as possible and as responsive as possible.
Yeah. Well, something we can revisit at the end of this summer. Um, so tell me some, the biggest thing that you've learned since starting this job, Putnam?
Prioritizing things, um. Trying to make sure that I follow through on things and that it's really easy to, um, someone put it as. Drinking from a fire hose. So I think it's really making sure that um things. Keep moving forward and that I'm trying to be as efficient as possible. It's easy to get pulled this way and pulled that way and pulled this way and then. Um, you know, it's this hat, that hat, this hat. So I think it's really trying to be as efficient as possible. And um succinct and as uh yeah, just efficient as possible. But I I'm really excited about it. I think it's. Great opportunity for us to continue to be the best we can here and work with community partners and engage the and educate. The residents in the community about what we do and continue to grow.
Yeah. Good, awesome. Uh, last question and I'll let you guys go. Um, do you have a a sort of a regular um cadence of. Um, time, you know, times that you're going to meet with these other community partners to sort of share ideas and 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 maybe do things together and. Joint things?
Yeah, that would be a really good opportunity. I I've hoped and I still want to work towards that if we could try to have a maybe even quarterly. Meeting of regional rec directors to be able to say, all right, what's going on in Newport? What's going on in Sunapee? What's going on in Newbury? So we can promote each other's programs and then find out ways we can maybe overlap and support each other. And we're such a small community, right? It doesn't, we're just so close to each other that it's. You don't have to travel very far to get to a few different places. So I'd really like to be able to do that. And I think when we think about places. Where we have the Halloween, we have the outing club involved with that. We have the barn playhouse involved with that. I'm working really closely with the hospital right now on hospital days, so it is a little bit. Um, by kind of event that maybe we interact and engage with a certain partnership and then we change and then we go to another one. So, but with each one of those, those connections continue to deepen and broaden.
Awesome. All right, Bill?
Hey. Putnam, it's great to see um how much progress you've made after. It seems like it was only yesterday, but it was almost seven months ago that we're going through the interview process. I'm glad to see you're. Taking on the personal development as well as your enthusiasm. That's, that's fantastic. Um, couple of just um sort of timeline things that would, I think, be helpful for the survey. We're done during the current uh bu- budget cycle. Um, because I'm sure there is the people warm up to the budget cycle, they're going to want some. Input from from that, so I would put that pretty high up on your.
Yeah.
List right now. The uh the other thing, which is maybe longer term, but which. Back to your first mission statement, um, which hasn't changed since you've been there, but I do worry in the long term about. The the how we accomplish the rest of the goals with the limited facilities that you have. Um, to use, and I don't know if you've given, had a chance to give much thought to that. The waterfront stuff is is easy. We've we've got that. You're making great use of that in the in the ice rink and. When Whipple comes back, that will be some help, but you can't run an entire program on in in Whipple Hall. I'm just. Concerned in the long run, whether you are beginning of recommissions, beginning to think about what do we do about the where we do our programs issue.
Yeah, space is certainly limited and so we need to be smart about what we do and where we do it. So I think that that definitely is something we'd be looking at moving forward and. As we continue to grow.
I mean, I think, you know, if if as time goes on, I mean, this is more for you, Jackie, that um if the rec commission. Thinks that there's a facilities limitation to the program. Um, you ought to be talking about that with the capital improvement people and the um. Um, budget people and so on, not just uh waiting and springing it on us.
Yeah.
I mean, I I guess I could also call the van a facility, but I don't think you've been using that that much, so.
Yeah, hopefully we're going to get that more, more used.
Yeah.
Out and about for sure.
Yeah.
No, that's great guidance. And I do think we've, you know, like with the, having the swing band come and the big dance and Whipple Hall. That was awesome to see and everybody dressed up and dancing the night away. So more events like that using what we have, but. You're right, we shouldn't just think contained within, you know, what we already have, what can we be thinking about, you know, for investments in the future as well.
Okay, um, are there any questions from the public? John? John, you have to speak into a mic. So you have to come over here, please.
John, you didn't learn last night? John was up and down all night with the mic.
Um, the question I have is a couple of questions on the lifeguards. Do we have liability coverage?
Yes.
For the lifeguards or something?
Yes, the town has insurance coverage for all of its activities.
And they, just so you know, that they are trained through the Red Cross lifeguard program. So that's the rigorous training that they go through and then are our. Daily expectation that they continue to do that in service training, keep those skills as sharp as they can.
Okay, and in the event of an emergency or an unruly parent. Do the lifeguards have the ability to call your, I'm not asking for it. Your emergency number that you would give to them in the event that you were in one location and couldn't get to. Yeah, maybe you could counsel someone on the phone instead of.
I have a work cell phone that I have that I use and also they have a list of numbers and supports that they, if they needed to, they could always call. New London Dispatch, kind of a non-emergency guidance kind of situation, but they have my number whenever.
Or they could reach you directly?
Yes, trying to be.
Okay.
And I'm around at the beaches as a priority as much as I.
Right, no, I'm just thinking if you're not on the on that beach from that. When that uh person acts up, do we put any of these quarterly uh announcements that you want to make of? The events in the municipal uh matters? Okay? And partnerships, um. I assume you're wondering more partnerships. How are you promoting the partnerships and how would we find out about? What partnerships you're interested in?
That's a great question, because I think organically it happens where people, you know, from different. Organizations come and attend the rec meetings. And so I think about the Bike Walk Coalition. Um, you know, asking for our support with adding the the bike racks and and getting involved there, but. Um, you know, it probably is something that we could promote a little bit.
Yeah, a- and I just did that today for the hospital. They have an event for on Facebook that they create an event and. So they are promoting hospital days through that. So they'll say, all right, we're going to make New London Rec Department. A partner on the event, so then everyone will see that we're partnering that on that program. So that's a good way to get that information out there. And also, I think to be able to promote a- as necessary different partnerships. And I think sometimes it's important to remember too. That sometimes people want a lot of promotion and then sometimes people will just say, yeah. We're going to help you out with this, but you know, I think, so I think it's good to understand where um where we want to promote that and then also where we want to. Get as much help as we can.
But just to clarify, you're wondering if you're an organization, how do you know that New London Rec is here to? Yeah. So that's where, I mean, I do think it's probably something that we could advertise a little bit more proactively. Through social media and on the website. I mean, you know, we could see the big, and we work, you know, really closely with the chamber and.
Yeah.
But.
Or if someone wanted to sponsor a part of one of your programs?
Mm-hmm, yep. And I think that that's the volunteer engagement and I would love to be able to get back. I know. Something, you know, like the library has friends of Tracy Memorial Library. I think it would be wonderful to get. You know, friends of the rec rec department and we had a wishlist and we had. Um, you know, a group of people who are really committed to helping out the rec department, whether their time or raising funds and things like that. And I think with the collaborations, part of what I want to do is I also want to be respectful of other groups and to say. You know, this might be your event that we're not trying to horn in on. We want to work collaboratively with everybody.
Right.
We want to be able to establish boundaries where we're going to work together and who gets credit for what or whose event it is or things like that. So I think that's really important to. Keep those in in mind moving forward.
Right.
The other piece that we've been doing, and this is very tactical, but for strawberry fest, we did a signup genius. And promoted that signup genius to get volunteers to help, you know, with the setup, with running the event and selling the strawberry shortcake.
Right.
BB came out for cleanup and it was a torrential downpour. Um, appreciate you.
Light rain.
A light. Passages got harder and harder, but uh. But yeah, no, so and yeah, but that's what Putnam was speaking to is like, it's. It's hard to get people's attention and all the noise and all the.
Right.
Communications that go out.
The Halloween event, is that the next big one that you're preparing for?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Can you get the word out?
Yeah, and we've been working really closely with um Chief Line and Chief Cop about with their.
Yeah.
Expertise on that, so that they've been really helpful in that process as well.
Tell your friends, it's the Sunday. It's Sunday. It's not going to be Halloween Day. It's the Sunday before so that we can close.
October twenty ninth.
October twenty ninth.
Right.
Sunday, October twenty nine.
And uh, last thing, I'm glad you're on full time.
Oh.
Me too.
Okay, if there are no further questions, um, thank you, Jackie. Thank you, Putnam, for coming and sharing information with us. We really appreciate it. So if you all want to walk home. Go ahead. Thanks for coming, really. Good night. And our next uh person to speak to us is Jamie Hess, who is Chair of the Energy Committee. He's going to give us. An update on community power, which I think everybody's very interested in. Uh, Jamie, can you come and use the mic, um, microphone? We're being, we're being recorded.
This one over here?
Yeah.
Okay, happy to. Well, I just wanted to congratulate Putnam briefly on a great presentation. I'm very happy to be here. And I want to do, it it brought back a memory of when I was a parent of two elementary school kids. I got together with the. Um, this was in Vermont. I got together with the rec department, the police department and the elementary school principal in our town. And organized an event. Um, for the elementary school kids that I believe is still going on now, twenty years later. Um, and the event was called Bike to School Day. So, um, if anyone in this room might be interested in uh replicating the event here in New London, I'd be more than happy to help.
That, well, they, you know, they are doing a bike walk to school now, so um I'm sure they would love your assistance. You know, if you, maybe Putnam, you could let Jamie know when it's going to happen and. Yeah.
Yeah, we did it in May and then it was so successful, we did it again in September. And now it happens twice a year. Um, I'm for biking, October can be pretty chilly. Which was why we tried to do it in a little bit war. which was why we tried to do it in a little bit warmer time of year. But anyway, yeah, I'd be happy to help with whatever you got going. All right. So I'm here actually to speak about something different, which is community power. And I didn't prepare a presentation like Putnam's. I don't have a PowerPoint. I'm mainly here to talk and give you a roadmap and talk about a little bit about the brief history of community power up to this point. And then a roadmap of how we can get it up and running here in New London. Hopefully sooner rather than later. So first of all, the seeds of community power were laid in, I believe, something like 2018, 2019, when this New Hampshire State Legislature passed enabling legislation. I think it's called RSA 53, has a bunch of different chapters. And then the nonprofit Community Power Coalition was formed sometime after that. The coalition now has, I believe, 35 member cities, towns and Cheshire County is a member as a county, representing something like 25% of the population of New Hampshire. Nashua is the largest municipality that's a member. The, our Board of Selectmen, two of you participated in this. We approved the Joint Powers Agreement about a year and a half ago. And since that time, we put an article to the voters at town meeting this past March, which was approved unanimously or nearly unanimously. So that's recent history here in New London. So the more significant thing that's happened since our March town meeting is that a month later in April, 12 New Hampshire communities launched community power through the coalition. And the initial electric rates provided by the coalition were about 25% lower than ever source, which was a huge boost to our enthusiasm about community power. The next set of rates, which take effect at the beginning of next month, community power is about 13% cheaper than ever source. So we knew that the 25% difference was an anomaly, unlikely to be repeated. We're hoping that the 13% will become more of the norm. And that's delivering significant savings to residents and small businesses throughout those 12 communities that have already launched. Now, we, well, I personally am eager to see New London launch community power in our town next winter, hopefully at the beginning of February. And in order for that to happen, there are really just two actions that need to be taken. One is to submit our so-called electric aggregation plan, which was approved by town voters in March. Submit that to the, to the Public Utilities Commission. And in that submission, we have to designate an authorized officer who will be the liaison with the PUC. Now, I don't believe as a volunteer committee chair, I am qualified to be the authorized officer. So maybe Kim, that could be you. And we can get together on that if you'd like. But that plan should be submitted to the PUC this month. And there's a cover letter. We have a template for the cover letter. It just, we just need to fill in the blanks. And it's sent in by email. So that's pretty simple. Now, step number two involves the Board of Selectmen who need to approve a set of contractual agreements with the coalition. And they have what might seem at first to be a little bit scary names. One of the, one is called the Cost Sharing Agreement. There is also a risk management document and a member services contract. So what I need, what I want to make clear first off is that there is no cost to the town of New London or the taxpayers. But there is an obligation, sort of a non-monetary obligation, which is, it derives from the fact that in order to offer the lowest electric rates in the state, which the coalition will be proud to offer starting in August, they need to do some very fancy footwork in terms of purchasing the power that they're going to resell to members and subscribers. And those purchases have to be made when the price is the lowest. And sometimes that means entering into sort of like a futures contract where I'm going to, as an officer of the coalition, I'm going to obligate the coalition to buy electricity one, two, three years from now in a certain amount of electricity to get the most favorable rate. And in order to make that type of so-called hedging strategy work, the coalition needs to know that its member communities are going to stay within the coalition for X number of months going forward. Otherwise they'd be buying power that might never be needed. And that would be a disaster. So the, these agreements merely obligate us to stay in the coalition for, let's say, three years, a minimum of three years from the date the agreements are executed. And of the, the 12 communities that have executed these agreements, I would say there's total enthusiasm for what has resulted. And you know hindsight or looking back and wishing they had done things differently. So I, I'm, I'm not going to go into the language of these agreements. They are fairly lengthy. Let's say they average about 20 pages each. And we have some time to go over them with a fine tooth comb if we choose to do so. But my goal would be to have the Board of Selectmen execute these agreements sometime between now and let's say the end of September. And that would definitely get us on the rapid timeline to be able to launch community power next February. And allow our town residents and small businesses to take advantage of these bargain basement electric rates.
Jamie, certainly you've probably explored why people would want to get out of doing this. Why would they want to leave the coalition once they've signed up for it? What scenario would take place?
Well, the only possible scenario that I could think of would be if community power is no longer able to offer a discount off the ever source rates. However, there are two reasons why the Community Power Coalition is likely to succeed in the long term. Number one is it's a very lean and mean business or entity. At the moment, there is just one full-time employee and two part-time contractors. And everyone else in the coalition is a volunteer, including myself. I serve on the Board of Directors. So number two is that the coalition has acquired a license to some proprietary software that is, I was trying to think of what it might be similar to, and you've probably heard of program trading on the stock market. It's a software-based approach to purchasing electricity, looking at market trends to forecast when the rates are going to be lowest and jumping in and buying the electricity at that point. The software is not inexpensive, but it has delivered already millions of dollars in savings to the 12 member communities that have already launched. And when more communities launch next winter and spring, there will be millions more in savings. So the software has already paid for itself in, between April and, and today. And the savings will just continue to accumulate.
You know, I guess one thing that I've always wondered about is how ever source can still provide the poles and the lines and the billing and make money, even though they're not actually selling the electricity anymore.
Right. Well, if you, Janet, if you look at your electric bill, there are about six different components to a residential electric bill. Actually, it might be seven. And the supply charge for the electricity you use is only one of those seven components. The other components, chiefly the transmission charge and the distribution charge, that's where ever source makes its money. So regardless of whether you choose ever source as your electric supplier or not, they do not make money on the supply charge at all. Even if ever sources your supplier, they pass that electricity through at cost. But believe it or not, they don't use a smart method for procuring power. And part of that is because they are bound by Public Utilities Commission rules that don't allow them to take full advantage of software like what the Community Power Coalition uses. Now someday in the future, the PUC may change their rules and allow ever source to procure power the same way the coalition does. The New Hampshire Electric Co-op is not bound by these rules. So if you look at co-op rates and of course Wilmud and Andover and dozens more towns near us are on the co-op for a supply. Co-op has the best rates of any utility in New Hampshire. But even so, the Community Power Coalition is beating the co-op, something that we never expected to happen. And not only that, we're also beating a lot of the third-party competitive suppliers like Standard Power, which the town has used for its electricity for many, many years. And it looks like those days are numbered because the Community Power Coalition will be a better deal for the town of New London's electric meters starting next year.
Bill, do you have any questions?
Jamie, thank you for the update. How, how is the coalition figuring out what the demand is going to be so that you make their forward contracts? I mean, you're talking about buying electricity multiple years into the future. How do they determine what the, what the volume of demand is going to be?
Well, it's, it's mainly by making data requests to the utilities. So in the case of the town of New London, we would make a data request to ever source for not only, well, it would, it would be anonymized data. So you wouldn't be able to tell Bill Helm purchased this much electricity in this month. But we would, the coalition would get data on the number of accounts in town, the total aggregate consumption. And then based on the coalition's experience with the 12 existing member towns, we know that the so-called opt-out, which allows, we have to allow residents and businesses to say, I don't want any part of this. I want to stay on ever source. The opt-out rate so far is less than 1%. So about 99.5% of the customers who have been given the choice to take community power have taken it. And I'm not sure what's with that half of a percent that didn't, but maybe they like spending more money.
So the simple answer then is that they're able to use the project forward from current volumes of, of use?
Exactly.
This is not unlike what a cooperative group here does in buying natural gas or propane forward also, and the same principle on a much smaller scale.
Right.
So I mean, so our, our neighborhood, for example, buys propane in the futures market and takes advantage of a price that's probably half of what the market price is.
Wow, we might have to get in on that. Dan and Elkins. Except of course, we're trying to reduce our propane use to zero.
Right. Well, that's a different issue. So I would think that Kim would be the logical person to be the legal representative for us. Look at, look at your nodding your head because of your extensive background. You'll love reading all these documents.
And not Jamie, we work well together.
Okay. So, so the question really is if Jamie is looking for decisions by the end of September.
Yeah, I just want to, BB, do you have any questions?
Yeah. So is the next time that a town can join onto the community power winter, is that why you, that's your goal for New London? First question. And second question, how many towns are lined up to come online with community power?
Well, as opposed to the 12 that are already using community power, there are around 10 more that are aiming to launch between February and April of next year.
Okay.
And one of them is Newport, which just recently approved the Joint Powers Agreement, but they want to fast track their community power. And instead of taking two years, they want to complete the entire process in under a year.
Okay. And that's got to give more buying power to the community power, right? The more towns coming on is giving them more purchasing power?
Yes, absolutely. Which if, if it works in an optimal way, we may see the differential between community power and ever source growing rather than shrinking. Because right now there are 76,000 subscribers, 76,000 utility accounts on community power. And that could, it could be double that next year. And then we would look, we would be looking at the coalition before long becoming basically the largest power, electric power supplier in the state. Not there yet, but it could be coming.
Okay. Okay. I have another question, but I don't know how to formulate it, so I'll think about it. Okay. So Jimmy, is it my understanding that you need, we need to designate someone as our representative to the Community Power Group and also that we approve the Community Power Agreement? Is that what we need to do tonight?
Well, actually, all you have to do tonight is agree that, that Kim is going to be the authorized officer in dealings with the Public Utilities Commission, which is strictly a formality. So then sometime between now and the end of September would be the opportune time to execute those contracts, such as the Cost Sharing Agreement, which sounds more onerous than it really is.
Okay. John, you have a question, but you have to do it on the microphone. Maybe you would want to move up.
Question I had was, doesn't, don't have to submit. I'm just after listening. Don't we have to submit the agreement by the end of July, the initial agreement online?
All I'm aware of that needs to happen.
The aggregation.
The microphone back. Right. The electric. Right, the electric aggregation plan is what we're submitting to the Public Utilities Commission. And yeah, the sooner the better. Because after all, it was approved by town voters at town meeting in March. So we could have submitted it as early as March, but it wasn't critical to our timeline to do that. And that's why, that's why we've let it slip.
Six weeks to review the contractual agreement to formally join.
Well, we have probably two and a half months, but we could pretend it's six weeks and get it done early.
Then the other question I have was, since we're on standard power now, how do we make the transition from standard power to community power in February with the current contract that we're under?
Okay, well, that's, that's a little minor detail that I didn't mention heretofore, so I'll go through that now. So I referred earlier to standard power through which the town of New London has been buying electricity for probably over a decade. And the, the contract that we entered into that began in November of twenty nineteen, which was a four-year contract, ended up being extremely advantageous to the town because it locked in a rate of, I believe, seven point eight six cents per kilowatt hour, which didn't seem great at the time, but when electric rates tripled, all of a sudden it looked really, really good. So that contract was a four-year contract. It expires in, I believe, mid-November of this year. And the contract renewal that we were offered was really not a good rate at all. It was about fifty percent higher than the previous contract. And I'm confident that Community Power can beat that price. In fact, it's beating that price starting at the beginning of next month. So we don't want to get out of the contract early because then we'd pay early termination penalties. But when the contract expires in mid-November and Community Power in New London hasn't quite launched yet, we would merely go on to what's called Eversource Default Service. And we would be on Eversource Default Service for two months and possibly a third. Now, what's the implication of that? Well, two of our electric meters, the ones that have solar arrays attached to them, are already on Eversource Default Service, so there would be no impact there. For the other meters, we would be paying a fraction of a penny more per kilowatt hour, less than one cent extra for those two to three months. And then we would be able to lock in the Community Power rate starting at the beginning of February, if we're able to launch in the timeframe that I'm recommending. So the only downside risk really is if there's a glitch somewhere and we're not able to launch Community Power on February first. But based on what's happened with the twelve communities that have launched so far and the ten or so communities that are planning to launch concurrently with us next year, I don't really see any glitches getting in the way.
Jamie, thank you. Right.
Right, because basically the, the PUC has sixty days to approve or deny the plan that you submit. And if we submit it and they come back with criticisms, we want to give ourselves time to rectify those and resubmit the plan and get it approved. But what has happened so far with the twelve-member towns, I think the first one that submitted a plan, they submitted it before there was a process for approving it. So it got rejected. But then as soon as the process was established by the PUC, they resubmitted the plan and it was approved without without any complaints. And the other eleven plans similarly were approved as a matter of routine. So I believe ours will be as well.
All right. So do I have a motion to appoint Kim Holquist as our representative to the Community Power Board? I guess it's a board.
Well, it's, it's actually, I apologize for interrupting.
You know, go ahead.
Kim would be the authorized officer in, in dealings with the Public Utilities Commission. Versus representatives to the Coalition, I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Coalition. And Robin Rainey Lobaz, who is a member of our Energy Committee, is the designated member representative to the membership of the Coalition. So we have not only a seat on the board, but also a seat in the membership.
Okay, well, so specifically what would Kim be appointed to?
So Kim would be the authorized officer designated to engage in dealings with the Public Utilities Commission.
Okay, do I have a motion? All right, all those in favor? Jamie, thank you very much for that detailed explanation. That was really great. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I, I was trying to keep it less rather than more detailed. Otherwise, we, otherwise we'd still be here at midnight. But I'll, I'll look forward to getting together with Kim and maybe she and I will be working on things till midnight. Bet you can't wait.
Yeah, always happy to work with you, Jamie. All right, Renee, we're ready to hear from you and perhaps you'd like to come up here and use one of the microphones. Renee is our housing navigator. Thanks, Jamie. Good night.
Go ahead. Excuse me, no, no bothering necessary. Thank you guys for seeing me tonight. I know you guys have a busy evening. I'll try to keep it brief. So I am here. I am the housing navigator. I'm kind of, I'm also associate planner with RPC, so I'm putting on a little bit of that hat tonight in conjunction with housing navigator because it falls under this realm. But our housing lead couldn't be here tonight to talk about this, so I offered to bring it up and just touch base with you all about it. Back in March, there was a letter sent out to the RPC's communities and explaining a program that they are piloting in conjunction with Vital Communities. And they kind of realized the letter went out at not the best opportunity time for a lot of towns amidst a vote and very busy and snowstorms and everything. So the letter probably got missed in shuffle of things and things got busy. But we just wanted to round back on some communities with this and just kind of answer some questions. It kind of came up at our last Housing Commission meeting. And Adam had asked me to come to Planning Board, so I spoke with them last night. So Bill, I apologize. You already heard my set. But yeah, so I just wanted to kind of quickly go over it and see if you all had any questions. So again, the pilot program is in conjunction with the RPC and Vital Communities. And they've been doing a lot of work, as you know, with the need for housing in our state and in our country. And most recently, I was just flipping through the planning magazine and my number stuck out that, you know, nationwide, we need three point seven million homes. So it's a big picture problem. Part of localized to our area, there's been efforts made. The regional housing needs assessment has been happening with the RPC over the last year plus the Keys to the Valley effort that the RPC, along with a couple other regional planning commissions across the river, has been put out. And some of those findings is through those kind of discoveries, if you will, was that infill development is very much needed and suits for our towns and area of incremental development. So I think they kind of are coining it as the ADU plus production. So ADUs being the accessory dwelling units or in-law apartments, plus kind of lends itself a little further into tiny homes, cottage courts, maybe turning a single-family home into a duplex. And so some of these creative solutions to the housing need. The biggest piece of that, though, is that homeowners are not developers. And so how can we help kind of bridge this gap with homeowners who may have great intention and like, yeah, I would love to do this. I just have no idea where to start. So the housing, sorry, the homeowner developer utility, which is the name of the program, is a rather large plan. But part of that process is to hire and retain resource brokers who would then be that liaison person. And someone has the idea, yes, I want to put an in-law apartment above my garage. Where do I even start? And they can reach out to the resource broker and they will walk them through from start to finish. The goal here is also to help assist with design permitting, financing, construction, maybe some legal aid if they have some questions. And all of this is pertaining to whatever town that person is living in. So it's nothing that's superseding and zoning. It's that person's acting as a liaison to say, here's where your town is in building this or wanting to do this. Here's what you would have to do to complete it and helps then walk the homeowner through the process. So that's kind of a quick rundown of the homeowner developer utility or utility and the resource broker positions that they are looking with this plan to implement as the liaison for homeowner developers. Because again, that's kind of a missing piece with this. It's a the plan is scheduled to go over the rest of this year and they're hoping to have a bigger, more solidified business plan by the end of twenty-four. So some of these pieces are still kind of being formulated. They're hoping to hire a resource broker in the fall to the end of the year to kind of help start getting that business plan going again. And not going again, but to get the business plan going and seeing how they can tweak some of it. And then hopefully let it take off. So any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. How do you, I'm so sad, I wanted to, how, how do people know about, hear about this program? You know, your homeowners, unless you're on the planning board, you may not know that it's an issue and that maybe you could do this with your house. How do you, how do you find out?
Right, great question. So part of that has already somewhat happened. A lot of, again, this was sent out in March, but in early May, there was a Home Creators Expo that was put on by Vital Communities in Hartford, Vermont, and they advertised it in many places in the area. And it was held at the Hartford Technical Center. No, no, it's okay. I think as a note, I think the doors may automatically lock at six thirty. So you may, it happened to me last night trying to get in as well. That's, yeah.
Thanks, Emily.
So part of that is awareness, bringing awareness out, and that's part of the business plan as well, is to kind of bring the purpose, the structure, the market opportunities, finding those points of contact and getting the information out there as well. So the Home Creators Expo went off in early May. I attended it. It was about a five or five to six-hour event where they had kind of all those moving pieces and parts. They had a, Mascoma Bank was there to help with financing questions on projects. There was a couple of people from like Vermont, it's Vermont side of DES to answer questions as far as water and sewer. They did a presentation. There was, excuse me, a designer, a few designers and developers there as well that hosted like thirty-minute sessions to kind of do a quick rundown of some things and then stayed for questions afterwards. And that event, again, was presented as a homeowners expo and Home Creators, I'm sorry, Home Creators Expo. And I will say I was there. It was a beautiful sunny day after a bunch of rain also. And we had, they had probably about a hundred and fifty to two hundred people in attendance, which blew me out of the water. Because I was like, surely it's a Saturday morning into the afternoon. Everyone's going to be enjoying the sunshine. I feel so bad if this doesn't go off for them, but they, I would say they hit it out of the park and there was a ton of interest. And part of that too, sorry, backing up a little bit. So RPC is doing this with Vital Communities. And obviously there's a financial cost to beginning this program and getting the business plan off the ground. We do have currently some funding and support from Vital Communities, Town of Hartford, Dartmouth Health, Two Rivers, Otaquichu Regional Foundation, Mount of Scutney Regional Commission and the UVLS RPC as well so far that are helping to fund this thus far. And so it is a cross-the-river program, so it's kind of Vermont and New Hampshire in our region addressing the need. So I think that's kind of a unique scenario as well. But I hope I answered that question. It is a lot of education that needs to be done and a lot of marketing as well to get the information out there.
Bill, do you have any?
I'd rather, I listened last night, as Renee said to this, this presentation, so I'll let you and BB go.
BB?
No, I can't, I read the, I can't think of any questions at the moment. I think it's a great program and obviously much needed.
So Renee, what are you asking us to do?
So there's a letter of support that's sent out to the towns. And so we are asking, and a lot of support is twofold. So it is a lot of support, just saying we support this program, we support this mission to develop this program and plan. And that will help us secure funding in the future when we go to funding to have those letters of support backing our applications for grants and such. There is also a financial contribution that is an option as well. It's not required, so do not feel obligated. But if the town feels like this is something they really want to get behind and want to financially contribute as well, a question came up last night as to is there a timeframe or does it need to be this year? The answer, I've gotten this far, and I'm going to double-check with a couple other folks at Vital Communities, is there's not really a timeframe. So we understand budgets and we understand you might not have it built in the budget this year and say you do realize that you, you know, would like to give some to this. You know, even if you just kind of pledge and say, we'll work this in next year and see what we can do. That would be an option, so.
So have towns contributed financially?
That's a great question. I do not have that running list. I'm not, I apologize. I'm not the lead on this program, but I can certainly find out for you. I can make it known of that now. I know Hartford was one of them back in, but again, that was back in March that they had. So from March, no letters went out. I'm sure there's been a couple, but I can find out and get that answer back to you.
I guess I'd be interested to know what kind of contribution towns and cities have made.
Sure, sure. And the, with the funding that kind of came up last night a little bit too. So I believe you guys have the letter, but of the cost business plan of what it's going to cost for one resource broker and their goal of four resource brokers. So again, that funding kind of helps kick that off and get that going so that we can have as many resource brokers as hopefully we can to help manage the communities. But I can certainly try to find out financial.
Okay, are there any questions from?
Like, I would like to say something.
Go ahead, Bill.
I just didn't want to influence you all. I was concerned last night, Renee, that the Planning Board really asked a lot of questions that you really weren't able to I understand your position, answer. And I came away myself with questions about where we are in this town. I see Peter Nichols here from the Housing Commission and so on. And I'm not clear that the Planning Board certainly didn't take any action last night. They kicked it to us tonight. I haven't, I don't know how the Housing Commission has talked about this program or not. I haven't, I don't know how the Housing Commission has talked about this program or not. And I look at the 2024 deadline or goal for getting this thing launched. And I think we need to get ourselves together and figure out, well, this is something that all of the groups in town who you've been presenting to are on board on this. We don't have anybody from the planning board here tonight except me. And I certainly didn't hear a large vote of support. I didn't hear a non vote, but support the other night from, last night from the planning board. I don't know how the Housing Commission feels about this. Our budget cycle hasn't even begun. We are very tight with the year that we've already started in. We've got some significant issues to deal with. And so my inclination is to say, keep us informed. We need to do some talking in ourselves at this, at this point. But I don't, I personally don't think we should be jumping on the bandwagon at the, at this point. So that's where I came away and had the overnight to think about it.
Sure. And again, if if it's the financial aspect and the budget, again, I totally understand that. And if the letter of support, if you, you know, it wasn't another town that they did ask the planning board to weigh in on it. And I should have maybe asked a little clearer last night if they wanted to vote on it or suggest if they, another town, they did do that where the planning board kind of voted and then gave their, their thoughts back to the select board. So.
Listening last night, you know, I didn't comment last night, as you know, and I didn't see ground swell of let's, let's get on the board with with this last night. So I think there's some work that if we want to do this, needs to be carried out among the, at least three different groups in town. Getting the financial part is just also all the other things that that we're doing with, with housing. Does this fit with what we're, does this fit as a priority with what else we might have on our plate for housing? We haven't heard from the Housing Commission for, for a while. So I would urge you to sort of put us on a list to come back to maybe in the fall and see where, see where we are. I don't know. Maybe Peter has a different view. I notice he's just dying to have a chance to speak. But I, I came away last night thinking we're not ready to, to take, take a position.
Thank you. I do support taking some time to study this further. I've not seen the letter. The commission hasn't discussed this. I have many, many questions and that's not bad. Sometimes when you dig deeper, you learn more and you say, yes, this is great. Or you say, it could be better if we tweak this a little bit. So I, we all recognize housing is important in our town and that's a good first step is to tackling different ways to accomplish that. So I'd like to see the letter. I'd like to discuss the concept and see how it works. I would say, Bill, we did meet, the Housing Commission met with the Board of Selectmen about three weeks ago. And just, no, we didn't. No, we didn't discuss this. But we would like to discuss it and see how it fits. It is true that the ADU issue and how to create housing through the ADU method is, is complicated. But the commission's been working with Kier Sarge Neighborhood Partners recently. And they're putting together a guidebook with some suggestions that we had and doing a job that's being formulated and being put together. So you may hear some more about that. But, but one, just going back a little bit, one trick or problem with the notion of a resource broker covering broad communities, including different states, is that the regulations in each town are different. And the regulations in each state are different that the towns have to deal with. So there's a lot of complexity there, but could be a really good idea. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Peter.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Peter, but I thought as long as you're here.
You know, I think, Renee, that we definitely need to have a recommendation from the planning board and the Housing Commission. And then we can, you know, think about a finding, sending the letter and a financial support. But I think we need those two groups to give us some guidance on this.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. So thank you guys for your time. I appreciate it. And if you have any questions that pop up or you think of.
Three straight days in New London.
You're welcome.
Okay, do I have any public comments about anything that is not on our agenda? No? Okay. We have any old business? Nope. All right. New business, we're going to wait on the abatement request from the Masonic Association of King Solomon's Lodge. Unless Kim, you want to address it? Okay.
So the, we've got an application for abatement of 2022 taxes filed by the Masonic Association of King Solomon's Lodge, number 14. That application was filed on June 15th and the deadline is March 1st. So our chief assessor recommends that you deny the request for abatement of 2022 taxes for untimely filing.
Okay, BB, do you have any comments on this?
No.
Bill?
No.
All right. Do I have a motion to accept the recommendation of the chief assessor to deny the request based on untimely filing of the application?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, the town administrators report.
The letters on the new assessments are out. Chief Assessor and the assessing department sent those out and she is now having appointments with some taxpayers who would like more information. So anybody who would like to have some questions answered about their, this is a tentative assessment value. She is going to be taking information and they may change. But these values will be used for the setting of the 2023 tax rate, which will be done in October. Generally, the valuation of the town is up 64.2%. So there were some, some significant changes. Everyone, we all know about the recent rain emergency. All departments were very busy, did an excellent job. So I was coming in the other morning. I went by the spillway at the dam to see if water was indeed going over the spillway. And it was. And there was a boat that the fire department was unleashed from its dock. Luckily, it didn't go over the spillway because that could have been a real problem. So that was a good save. All departments really did a great job and hopefully this weekend, we don't get a lot more rain. Because as we know, there's plenty of saturation out there. Our roads fared fairly well. We had a few minor things here and there that we put cones up and fixed. And I believe that Public Works was going to try to help out another neighboring town. Many of the towns got together to help each other. So that's, that's excellent. I have contacted the college and we're working on plans for the summer gathering. And I will report more on that when we finalize that, as well as getting an engineer to look at those two pieces of property that we discussed at the last meeting. So I'll have more to report on that soon. And that's all I have.
Okay, well, I know it's been busy, so thank you, Kim. BB, what about Tri-Town Watershed Group? Have you met?
Not since our last meeting. We've got a meeting coming up. I think it's July 28th where we're gonna, the topic is going to be road salt. And we have the highway department directors from the three towns and the state highway person attending that meeting. So Bob is generously, he's so busy. I appreciate it so much. But has generously offered to come to that meeting. He says he will, would enjoy talking about it. I'm very grateful that he's going to take the time. Okay, thank you. All right, Bill, what about planning board?
Yes, planning board met last night, as mentioned earlier. It was fairly straightforward meeting. We approved one lot line adjustment on Ice House Road between two, two neighbors. We also approved the removal of two single trees that were both in the Shoreland Overlay District that were in bad shape. And we talked about getting started on the capital improvement program for this year. And hope we'll be able to make a presentation to this group as we prepare the budget at the end of October.
Okay.
And I also saw, while you've got me, attended the monthly meeting of the Water Commissioners.
Okay.
And they are continuing to review the engineering studies that they've received and made some suggestions back to the engineers on some things they might want to take a closer look at. Otherwise, not a lot in that meeting.
What about waste reduction? Did you have a committee meeting?
No, all we did was hand out buckets to people and we've got about 90 of them handed out now.
Okay. With regard to other business, Chief Cobb is here.
Hi, thank you. I wasn't going to let the meeting end without sneaking in. I have one little thing and this came out after the agenda came out. So I apologize for that. But I have a grant opportunity from the Office of Highway Safety. And we've done these grants before many times over. There's speed enforcement, DWI enforcement, distracted driving and other mobilizations, including join the New Hampshire Click, drive sober, get pulled over and you drive, you text, you pay. So we have this opportunity from the Office of Highway Safety. I have the grant agreement because I applied for it. And it's in the amount of $8,200. And so basically, this is just opportunities. These grants start in October, I believe, of this year. And they go throughout the rest of the year. And you'll see a lot of these, these pushed out at the same time. They're called saturation grants and you'll see a lot of other agencies throughout the state doing them at the same time. So it's a good opportunity, I think, for New London PD to have these grants here in our town. Certainly given the amount of speeding complaints and just general driving behaviors that we've seen over the past year. So I think it's a good opportunity. So I would be looking for the board to agree to accept the grant from the Office of Highway Safety in the amount of $8,200. Tonight, there is some match that is required. So it's 80% federal funds and a 20% applicant share. That's the match required, but we can use things like the gas that the officers would use in the cruiser. My time to complete the grant or the officer's time to schedule the, the officers to do the grant. So there's a variety of ways that you could use or that you can meet that match required, but there is some local match to it. But this is a great amount of money, I think, and a good opportunity.
So what actually happens? Do the people see it, sit in a cruiser and look for?
Yep, yep. It's, it's just like that. Only so if an officer is going to take one of the speed enforcement patrols, they're not taking calls on the road. Of course, if a major incident comes in, they would get called away from the grant and the clock stops on the grant while they're addressing that other issue to help out. But they're not taking calls. They're just working on speed enforcement or DWI or distracted driving. So that's, that's one thing that would happen. And generally, some of these are for like a two week period. And there's a kickoff day that all departments are required to have a patrol out on that day. Let's say it's a Friday. Everyone's out there for the speed enforcement or distracted driving or whatever the, the project is for that, that week. And again, we've done these in the past many times over. So this is just the amount that we've been authorized for, for this year, for this grant.
Okay. BB, do you have any questions or Chief Cobb?
No.
Bill?
No.
Okay. And so I'm sorry, what is this grant?
It would be from the Office of Highway Safety.
Okay. So do I have a motion to accept a grant in the amount of $8,200 from the Office of Highway Safety? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you. And I just need to coordinate with you, Janet, to have you sign as the chair of the Board of Selectmen, but we can work that out.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. With regard to priorities, Kim is going to address what's been going on with the police station.
So the, our work on the video is ongoing. We met with our videographer last week. So that is well underway and we will be working to be able to unroll it for our summer gathering meeting.
All right, we need to approve the minutes of June 7th, June 21st and June 29th. Has everybody read them?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will abstain from June 29th.
And I will abstain from June 7th. Otherwise, they're all approved. All right, our next regular Selectmen's meeting will be Wednesday, July 26th here at 5:30 PM. All other meetings are posted to the town's website and community billing bulletin boards. So now we're going to sign some pay vouchers.
Before we go there, before we go there, Janet, can we just talk for a minute about what it looks like we're going to do in terms of our schedule going into September? We're going to go back to Thursday nights. Are we going to, or whatever, I'm trying to do some personal planning. And I don't know if we can do Wednesdays or Thursdays. I assume we'll stick with the second and fourth weeks.
Well, how long does golf last?
It ends on August 17th.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And I'm fine with either day. It's whatever, either one works for me. So.
Well, budget usually dates Wednesday night. So do we? Go back to Thursday then.
That's one of the pleasures of being, yeah. So Thursday will be fine. I just wanted to try to do some planning.
Okay, so we would be in September, it would be the second, the 13th. No, I'm sorry, the 12th and the 26th. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm looking at Tuesday, right, 14th and 28th.
What, what do we have? Wait, let me just look at my thing here for August. What do we have now for August? The ninth.
Ninth and 23rd?
Okay, perfect. No, not in August. I don't. So those, that's already set for, all right, good. So now we're going to September.
Okay, so. And wait, do we still want to meet at 5:30?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that good for everybody?
So what did we say for September 7th, 21st?
14 and 28.
14, 28. Okay. Okay, at 5:30. Do we want to talk about October? Because I already know when I'm away for October.
I'm not sure. I may go to Chicago in October. So can we wait a little bit on that?
Yep, I'll be in Chicago too.
Okay.
Anybody else want to go to Chicago?
We can just have the meeting in Chicago. Okay. Okay, so we're good for all that for September. Yep, okay. Good. All right, we've got pay vouchers. Sign. Thanks, Chief Cobb.